Our May 6, 2015, Reguish session. At this time, would you please silence or shut off your cell phones? And please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. Denise additions and additions.
We have two additions on the truancy ordinance we're going to discuss today from yesterday. And we have added a 3:00 Sage Brown discussion. We have deleted the grave marker request. We did that yesterday.
All right. With that, at 10:00, we have a public comment. Is there any public comment at this time? No public comment?
We're so glad to be back.
Yeah?
Good to have you back.
All right. So we'll move right on down the agenda. The first item is Darwin Johnson here today. This is a nuisance complaint update.
This is additional information following on from our previous discussions about the two issues and so forth. But we can use any communication with the folks who are on the front.
Okay, where the...I've been out on some medical. I'm not 100% up to speed, so...
He'll get us up to speed.
We'll get up to speed here shortly. Is he on his way?
He is on his way.
All right. We can take care of the minutes real fast while we wait for Darwin to get here. Well, we'll hold off on minutes. Darwin is here. Darwin, we have the nuisance complaint update, remember? That I'm not fully up to speed.
So yesterday, spent a few hours driving up north. Took care of a few things up there. And I have two recommendations and I propose to pass around to you. I'll start first with the David Journey...sorry.
Jerry.
Anyways, David...sorry, Jim Story is the property owner. You take a breath in there.
Why are you doing that? I was just saying, we had two complaints that came in. And Darwin had provided a previous preliminary report on the nuisance complaints. And we deferred any action pending additional communication with the property owners. With regard to nuisance, the nuisance is directed toward the property owner and not the person who is living on the property. So what we decided to do was to wait instead of taking immediate action to get additional information, determine, one, whether or not they...the responsible party had been notified, and then, two, whether or not they would be pursuing cleanup. And Darwin then gathered information in between our meetings.
Okay.
So Darwin, before you go on, folks, are you here for this discussion?
I'm not sure if that's what this discussion is about.
Okay. So the Jim Store one is in Silver...or Summer Lake, sorry, and off of Lakeview Lane. I will hand you these photos if you'd like. And I know Commissioner Kestner has also driven by these. I will tell you that Jim's story called on the 4th, which is Monday. And he and I spoke for a little while. And he acknowledged that he did have, you know, many vehicles on his property. He said that there was about 10 on the property at the time. Four out of the 10 were running. And that, you know, the other ones, he was waiting on a couple parts to finish fixing them up and that they would be returned, the most of which to his parents' property down in the valley. And they have a...he said a small farm down the valley that, you know, some of the cars belong to.
You refer to Willamette Valley?
Yeah, Willamette Valley, sorry. And that, you know, it's just a hobby. He, you know, he'll sell or trade these cars, the ones that he fixes up that aren't for their ranch farm in the valley. He said that he would be, you know, cleaning things up and that our further discussion with him was that he was going to provide us with kind of a game plan on how soon he was going to have a lot of that done. My thought is, since Monday, that maybe he's done some work even as of yesterday. Because when I went by this one, it didn't appear to be a nuisance at all to me. I think part of the issue might be is that the pictures that you've seen, there's actually two properties there. And so the, you know, combination of both may look like, oh, there's a whole lot going on. But when it comes down to each of those individual property owners, you know, they, in my opinion, don't require any land use and wouldn't require nuisance beyond what we've already sent out as a letter. And now his follow-up that he is going to be cleaning some of that up. And to me, you could have driven by that and wouldn't even have thought for a second that there was a nuisance there. I mean, you know, nothing's fenced in that, you know, subdivision of, you know, up at the Diana reservoir. So some things stick out. One of the three property owners that had complained does live, you know, adjacent, kind of right behind them off of Carlin. And their house is set a little bit closer to them. So they would see a little bit more than what I certainly saw from these pictures. But is it a public concern, public, you know, health, safety, things like that? Absolutely not, in my opinion.
One of the other issues, though, was whether or not he was actually conducting a business by refurbishing these cars. And there's a point where a hobby crosses over into being a business. And probably what happened, my speculation is that he gathered these cars that he works on and he got to a point where he went sort of beyond critical mass in terms of the volume that he had. And he was flirting with possibly, you know, operating a business that he wasn't comfortable with.
And that's absolutely right. And he and I discussed that possibility that he needed to do, you know, like a home occupation, repair cars and something and do the business aspect. But he said that most of them are going to be removed shortly anyways. There were stuff that belonged to his parents that he was just fixing up for them since that's his background, so.
So no action taken on that?
Yeah, I don't believe so. That would be my recommendation. I mean, if you guys, I mean, Ken again, if you...
Yeah. I heard from some folks that it was 20 cars, whatever.
Definitely not.
I estimate a dozen or less.
Yeah. And he said 10, he named them as we were going through. I mean, definitely knows what he's doing, but...
So you'll follow up?
I'll follow up with you again as I get the letter back from him and then...
But you'll follow up with the people that...
Yes, I'll definitely follow up with the people that made the complaint. And that one came in differently than most of the nuisances. We kind of...we never got the actual form from them or letter or photos from those that were complaining. So it was one of those ones where it sat and then he followed up with me. And I told him what we needed, but we never got it, so we just kind of moved forward anyways. So still nothing I've seen.
I would recommend just communicating with them and then checking into it and the situation being resolved.
Yep, that sounds good.
I would definitely stay with our process and they need to fill out the forms and everything. If not, you're going to be answering a lot of just phone calls if people not want to follow our process.
Yep, exactly.
So really highly recommend make sure that forms are there, everything's there.
Absolutely.
And it states exactly why and who and all that.
Yep.
What's the next one?
So next one is off of...over here. Off of Christmas Valley Highway, which is 85416. This one is...was, you know, filled out correctly by those. There was, again, three property owners who were complaining about this, the neighboring three property owners. And here's photos that haven't yet marked the location of all these.
So this is that they went from...
Yeah, since you haven't seen this one, sorry. We've all been down Christmas Valley Highway and, you know, seen multiple countless number of ones that could probably qualify for nuisance. However, we're working on complaint basis. And as we move forward, that's how our objective is to continue to move that way. So this one, there is definitely evidence supporting a nuisance, in my opinion, on this one. The property isn't fenced on the back section. And again, from the highway, in some of those pictures will show that the front of the property is fenced and it would appear, you know, that there's definitely some visual things there. But when you go around to the backside, and I wasn't on the property, but there's a little driveway for the south neighboring property. And you can...all that stuff is out in the open and you'll see the picture. This one, the letter was sent on the 27th to the property owner. And it looks like they...we have a receipt that they did sign for. I haven't heard a phone call. I do have a couple messages on my phone that I haven't checked this for, but I don't believe that that's probably one of them. So my recommendation on this one is that we would say it's a nuisance and, you know, all the junk that you're seeing in those pictures is, you know, told to be removed. Give them the 10 days, which is in our business policy.
Can the joint property owners see this?
Oh, yeah, definitely. I mean, I was, yeah, and I was, you know, in my little car that I have and I didn't even have to get out. I mean, it's very clear and none of it's fenced, so...
I sing it myself during the past.
Yeah, yeah, so. And, you know, and, you know, there are certain sections of Christmas Valley Highway that, especially around the highway, that are really bad. And it's like the whole block practically. These three property owners have well-maintained properties and this is the one that's kind of right in their backyard, literally, so.
So looking at this, we have to make sure that on the nuisance, we stay specific to what fits a nuisance. Or it looks like there may be some code or land use issues that would be separate than nuisance complaint.
On this one, you know, the...not looking again at the pictures, you know, they have a legal address. It looks like they're the home. There are campers on the property. Most of it, you know, looks like it's, you know, I don't know if they're trying to salvage some of that stuff, selling it secondhand or what, but there's a lot of...a lot of different...
So I guess what I'm asking you is you say this fits the nuisance part of our nuisance ordinance. Does this fit?
So, you know, deposit accumulation of junk, you know, parts, you know, marks from the appearance of the area to traction or cleanliness of the area. You know, I'm not sure if they require or safety hazards, certainly safety, we probably want them. You know, the accumulation of used appliances, including refrigerators, that's one of them.
In this one?
There's a couple things and I will be specific in the letter. And again, I need to review those pictures. I hit a lot of things at once. So I will sum it up to you and then show you. It'll be yours to get your as chair and then I'll have you sign that and get that 10-day notice out certified.
All the word junk is...is it specifically state the word junk?
Yep, our ordinance does, yes.
I would think all three questions should sign. But the chair will find whichever one you...but it should be...it's a board of commissioners' decision.
And the other follow-up, we did send out that 10-day notice. Your office had can sign this one that was to the ones at West Side. And so that probably...
Have we gotten a response?
I have still not got a response. I've got continual phone calls from the complainants and, you know, saying that likely you're not to... you probably won't receive...they're not signing for these letters. And that's...that appears to be the case. I still don't have them, haven't signed the receipt.
Was the letter...I thought you got the letter back from the person who was claiming to be the property owner?
No, I haven't got one from the property owners out at the West Side store.
Okay.
I've got, you know, our receipt from the post office, but no receipt back that they've signed for this. So it was suggested by, you know, the original complainant that we actually have probably a sheriff hand deliver this. And as we're not seeing any response, that's probably where we need to go.
Yeah, that's an actual next step to show them essentially that that's where the process is going to go if they don't take the steps themselves.
So I haven't yet had that conversation with the sheriff. This is the first I've talked about it. If you guys would like me to go and have that conversation with the sheriff, I'm glad to do that.
So what kind of timeframe should we use if they're not going to respond back to our letters, return receipt and bring the sheriff in?
Well, we give them 10 days and then we can take action ourselves. So we have the option of not necessarily automatically acting. If we haven't gotten a response back, my recommendation would be to make sure that it's handled that way. There's absolutely no possibility of them saying, oh, we're surprised by that.
And then they would have 10 days from that time?
Do you grant them additional 10 days?
Okay, I'm very good with that.
10 days ends tomorrow, so I would suggest if you don't get anything from tomorrow, then the sheriff goes out and does a handling.
So receipt back 10 days or postmark 10 days?
Uh, it was from the postmark, so.
Next steps the sheriff on that one.
So I will prepare the one and for Christmas Valley. I think that's the last thing I have for skipping down to nuisance...or sorry, property vacation.
Okay. Was there any other discussion or direction on the nuisance? Yeah, let's go ahead and go down to the property vacation possible considerations.
So I received another request for property vacation, a portion of 8th Street in the pied subdivision in Christmas Valley, which is Kagar addition of Silver Lake. And it's a six-foot road that was dedicated but not constructed between the blocks of 10-11...uh, block 25, sorry. And I think you've seen the map. I had a second map and it's still on the table there from yesterday. Sorry. It's oddly shaped and we had a little bit of a discussion on this yesterday, but as we continue to vacate undeveloped streets, if request comes in and we decide to do so, you know, each of intersection would receive to those, you know, those other tax lots which are adjoining. There's a whole lot...that's why it's oddly shaped the way this request looks.
Yeah, we had a little discussion on that yesterday. Is there any reason we can't go ahead and square that up on that West Side?
If I'm...I'm not sure exactly what you mean by the square enough of...
Well, you have...on this, you have it squared up and then on the other map, it's the little jog on both ends.
So, and this is exactly why I wanted to discuss this, so...
Legal counsel have one that shows...
Here's the oddly shaped piece. And why that is is because...
Right.
As you would vacate, say, this street, half would go to this property. And then, you know, as you vacate this street, then that half goes back to this property too. So there would be each...each time you do these, there'd be that...
Corner.
A little corner.
Yeah.
And so on this, that's exactly why I can only give them that corner because it's only, you know, the only property that really has those streets vacated and allowed to have.
But are these streets vacated?
No, they're not yet. I mean, I'm hoping that as we continue to send letters out, we'll get those vacated. But I have to have the property owner's signature or approval. 100%, we can do it without a hearing if it's 100% of the property owners. Say let's vacate it, if not, it's by request only.
Well, my only...I understand what you're saying about that jog. That's...but if that's still a platted road, then there would actually be access through that little corner, which would be very narrow.
Yeah, it would be about 30 feet.
It would be 30 feet?
The street is 60, so, you know, it actually probably be more like 32 because of the angle.
Okay, well, then that's a little bit better. I was thinking...I was thinking the road surface, so...
Yeah, you could definitely still drive through it. I mean, you wouldn't develop it to standards, you know, road construction standard.
But it's...people could still get through there because it's 30 feet away.
And I will be notifying on this newer map that you're seeing that Ken's got from and Jim's got is to all the...all the property owners within the paved area. So it's all those property owners. And I'm doing that also. I mean, it doesn't really affect the people on the butt 6th Street, but I kind of want to spark their interest in...
Well, it has the parents that on...down on the south that there is a property that's already encroached on the...
Yeah, yeah, I mean, from the...yeah, there's a bunch that are, so...
Right.
But then it's going to be problematic if the Mesa lots, they can't all be vacated because they do landlocked.
Yeah, they'd be...they'd have to be landlocked. So we need to give them access somehow still, so. And that...there is that one. That's the middle one on 6th Street.
So what you need out of us is to do the resolution to start the process?
Yep, yep, to agree to the resolution and then which starts the process, the process is outlined there.
So Darwin, when you notify landowners, adjacent landowners, do you also notify emergency services?
Yep. Now, I don't have the previous one in front of me, but when I have stuff for you before the hearing, it'll show those properties that were notified by certified mail in red and those are also the emergency service folks in the area, public utilities, things like that. And state Silver...Real Fire Protection District.
And the folks owning the Mesa property notified?
Yep.
And they have no objection to that?
Yep, so...
They stated no...
They were notified of the previous one and there was no objection, no comments actually received back. So they'll get re-notified now of this one and we'll see what they say. I would hope that they would say, yeah, please make it all of them.
Oh, was the previous one?
The previous one was crossed here, the streets continued through there back in January.
Oh, okay, okay.
This is now, I got new tax out there which shows an updated...
It's a different thing.
Yeah, it has a different one too.
Okay, I entertain a motion on the resolution number 15-05-06.
So moved.
So seconded.
Motion's been moved and seconded to accept resolution number 15-05-06 in a matter of a vacation proceeding of certain public planned within Lake County. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you. Thanks, Darwin. I think that's it.
Folks, are you here for a specific item on the agenda?
We were told that our property was going to be discussed here, but it hasn't been.
Which part of the county are you?
That's up by Silver Lake.
Up by Silver Lake.
Walker?
Walker, off Old Lake Road.
I haven't got anything from, yeah.
I talked to you Monday and you paid us a visit yesterday.
So we can talk about that one real quick. If you guys got a moment, since I'm here, I don't want to waste time there.
I want to be courteous if you guys travel here, so. And if you would state your name for the record, so Denise...
Larry Walker.
Larry Walker.
Captain Cable.
Welcome.
That's actually executive session where we're going to talk about that. But I can talk with him offline first and then...
Okay.
And then you want them to stick around for after that, maybe?
Why don't you talk to them and then you and I can talk and then...
Okay, that sounds good. Let's go. I will be back to you on that. Thanks for having me.
Thank you. All right, so our next item, intergovernmental agreement with the assessor. I don't believe we need to have an assessor here. He was in less board. We have a Lane County IBA, which has been reviewed by legal counsel. This is put into the budget for this next fiscal year. And it is supposed to be the same contract as we have had previous years. A dollar amount, I'm not sure if it's the same or not, but it's the same contract for you guys. And if we have questions, we'll get the assessor down there.
I'll make a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement between Lane County and Lake County.
So there are two. One is for software and one is for land use. So you have two separate questions. Commissioner Waters, if you want to pull the big paper apart, they are separated. There you go.
So the first one I have is... Support, number one development support.
Yeah, I had taxation, support of the property taxation assessment.
Yep.
That's my motion.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to accept the contract between Lake and Lane County. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries. So we have a second motion needed.
I'll move that we accept the intergovernmental agreement for sand slash vote on software support. Seconding Lane County and Lake County.
Motion's been made and seconded to sign the agreement with Lane County. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries.
Do we need Mr. Berman?
Probably wouldn't hurt. I'm sorry, didn't pay attention. She's going to go get Mr. Berman. So...
Frank, have you been doing any photography work lately?
So as we're waiting on Mr. Berman, let's go to those minutes that we have and make sure that I have the dates right. We got it right down to 17th of March.
Correct, from the 18th to 31st, April 14th and 27th.
18th and 14th. Okay, any other motions?
Any of those dates again?
March 18th, March 31st, April 14th and April 27th.
I'll make a motion to approve the methods of March 18th, 31st, April 14th and 27th.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve minutes of set dates. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye on the ones that were there and abstain from the ones that I weren't. Record would show that.
I shall do.
All right, the minutes are taken care of. Mr. Berman, sir.
Connect 5, I have it.
Connect 5.
Just a little break for the audience and the fact what things on the list.
The amendment is on the papillotes.
Precision approach.
Yeah, precision approach indicators. In the master plan of the connect up for the airport, they have that in there. Well, FAA is responsible for those, so that was already in their plans to put it in. So when we put it in, we didn't need to. So now we had to take it out because they're going to do it for two years.
The FAA?
The FAA is...so we have to do the minute to take that out. Keep it in within the code of the connect 5.
So this is, as we talked yesterday, there's no dollar changes, is there?
No.
This is just procedural amendment.
Yes.
And the state is good with this amendment, just we have to sign it as...as a county?
It's a technical change is what it is.
I'll make a motion to approve amendment number 1 to agreement number 30149 between the State of Oregon and Lake County.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept amendment number 1 to the contract number 30149. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
You needed the exercise.
I did, yeah. Okay, so we'll move to our addition at this time. We have the truancy ordinance. Yesterday, we had discussion and had document in front of us, the document... Yesterday we had discussion and had document in front of us, the document wasn't, uh, complete at the time. We have a new document now that should show, and I have not been able to completely review this. I hope that legal counsel has done, probably been visiting, because I think he received it this morning. If not, we can.
It would have been hard for me to look at.
It would have been hard all the way.
There's only one spot there, so I just made mine small.
And so the number on this ordinance should be one oh eight, correct, Denise?
Correct.
So the question that arise yesterday is. Need to have Exhibit A currently marked, which they have now. They've done away with law enforcement emergency clause on there, which this didn't put emergency clause, that has been cleaned up. And so now, um, what this will do is make, uh, the, what do you call it? The truancy officer able to be, be able to get through the process much faster than what the state guidelines are. And be able to help keep these kids in, in school.
Yeah, essentially consolidates a lot of things that are in state law and then allows a process for local administration.
So what we need to do is to start a hearing process and we're looking at having two hearings, one in Lakeview and one in Fort Rock in our meeting in June. So, um, procedurally, what do we need to do, accept this ordinance or accept a process?
Uh, both. Well, no, you're going to move to begin the ordinance adoption process. For this particular ordinance.
Okay, so we have to approve the ordinance.
Right.
Context, I guess it is.
Yeah.
And then approve the dates.
Correct, the dates of the hearing, and then following the second hearing, you'll make a decision as to whether or not to adopt the ordinance.
And is it okay to have those hearings back to back? We're going to do a Tuesday one in Lakeview and a Wednesday one in Fort Rock so that those superintendents could join us for those two close.
Oh. There's a certain amount of time in between the hearings that have to happen.
I think it's only one hearing required, is another option to have the second?
Well, I.
Will you check on that, let us know?
Well, if we can have one hearing, can't we just do a continuation of the one we hold here to just continue it to the next day? So it's just literally one hearing.
Legal counsel, let us know.
Yeah, well, in the meantime, I will make a motion to approve the ordinance one oh eight.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance one oh eight as the ordinance that we would be doing the hearing process for. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Frank. Are you familiar with what we're talking about? State law requires parents to have their kids in school. Some kids don't go to school, so the superintendent or the E S D superintendent has to go through the process to ensure that the kids attend school. And this is to streamline that process for the schools to conduct their business, otherwise it's kind of just. The school go through one and then the E S D had to go through it, so you start a long timeframe of kids not going to school. It constricts that timeframe so we can get the kids back in the school center. Two meetings, unless you declare an emergency in the long game. Two meetings separated by thirteen days.
Okay, so.
So let's hold the first one in May here, the second one in general there. That's what you were going to say.
That's exactly.
Yeah.
We need to advertise for two weeks.
One week.
One week, okay.
One week before the first reading. You buy copies each member, copies available at headquarters or here in the office. And anybody who requests it and notice by posting at courthouse and other public places, county application and newspaper.
Will that timeframe work?
Yeah, we can get it in for next week. We have a hearing on the nineteenth of the twenty.
I'll make a motion then that we hold the hearing on the nineteenth, it'll work, please.
Okay.
It, it will work, you say?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, for May nineteenth of two thousand fifteen in Lakeview and then the second meeting to be on Wednesday, June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen in Fort Rock.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to set the dates for the hearing as of May the nineteenth in Lakeview and June the third in Fort Rock. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Aye.
I was waiting on that, it's still carried. So Denise, are you the one that will advertise that or will Jake be the one that advertises that?
I will work with Jake on it, but from that at the office this week, it will record me.
Yeah, that's what I just, thank you for, just make it happen and thank you in advance for making that happen. The other thing is we have the three o'clock sage grouse discussion, continue this meeting in the afternoon. I haven't responded to the letter or anything, I've seen other people responded, is that meeting necessary?
Denise checked with Judge Grasky's administrative assistant, she said he, even though it would be short, said he'd like to do it. I don't intend to, but the, I have the same formalities.
Well, basically, you both have read the letter. Obviously, it was a subject of focus area designation, but the letter is more directed for timeliness. I mean, and changing stuff in the E I S. This has to do with V L A management environment impact statement to merely the regional plans to address sage grouse stuff. And what they did over about a six to nine months period, they went silent and did a lot of changes and they gave us less than two weeks to make comments, which is a two thousand page document and they didn't note what changes they made. So the letter is basically saying, we want longer time, how do you pinpoint the changes?
So, so do we want to continue, Dan's not going to be here, I'm questioning.
I'll join in and give my support because after I read the letter, I'll only make two things, you know. One was put your request in bold right up front and then also keep it at the end so that they can't say they didn't see our request. Carry a little more strength.
So we do need to carry it on as a public meeting, if we don't have a forum, then you'll attend as an informational meeting.
Yeah.
That, if we continue and then there's nobody here to close the meeting for the day, is it technically closed, is that?
Well, yeah, you're going, you're going to adjourn this meeting, subject to it being reopened possibly in the afternoon.
Okay, so then we'll see how I'm doing this afternoon, but I, it's, to me, my comfort zone's very good after reading.
Judge Grasky hit the nail on the head. It's personal, I'm not.
Well, it wasn't told you, but we have some experience.
Well, I didn't point that out, but I'm telling you that it was.
I'm not even sure if there's need for continuance, I don't want to go respond.
Okay, so.
I mean, I think we're in concurrent step, yes, let's send that letter.
Yep.
But why don't we just do that, is by consensus we support that and then not worry about having a meeting this afternoon?
And what may come about is you may ask for different signatures from different counties, which you should, since it's kind of almost. When that happens, you need to, you know, put this, put this letter in proper format and send it to us for us, for our signature. We'll have the chance to review it a second time in case there was any changes, but otherwise I would prefer that we sign it.
So consensus, we're in support of signing that letter and if the meeting attended this afternoon, be informational by Commissioner Kestner because we won't continue the meeting. Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll drop that three o'clock meeting time on Denise. All right, we don't have no department updates, legal updates for open session.
We have one then with the R and M machinery alone that we have given to them two, three years ago. They're now in arrears in payments on this loan. They made seven payments totaling just under thirteen hundred dollars, the balance is just under sixteen hundred. If they were to catch up on their schedule of payments, they would have to pay roughly six hundred dollars. Apparently what they've done in the past is fallen behind and then caught up, so that's where they are now. They've been notified that, by the Treasury Department, that they are behind and apparently a few times and to the point where they said that, okay, now we're going to turn over to legal. So they've been notified that our patience is running out. So the question is, what you would like me to do? And if you are considering litigation, then we would table this discussion and continue it in executive session on potential litigation, if that's the way the board seems to be going following discussion.
When you bring the camera up, she asked like be called when we got to her for me.
Yeah, that's how we do it. What was the date of our last letter? The last letter that we got from them? The last one that we sent to them. Oh, I don't know. Same, same. I think it was about, my recollection is that was about six weeks ago.
There should have been a last payment date on that email too, what was that?
I don't have the email here, I just took notes off of it, so I haven't been able to tell. But we haven't received any response from, of our last letter. No, apparently not.
Are those other items in the open session?
Well, my understanding is that you did want an update on the marijuana moratorium, so that was the next thing for regular session. And then we have one.
I thought you let in by saying you only had one.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, no, well, I only have one. I have no interest in discussing medical marijuana unless you want to talk about it.
Well, I do, I want to. We got a new decision, we went into a one-year moratorium and all the folks around us were making decisions whether to extend or just drop their date.
Right, the moratorium was now ended, ended May first. And so you have to decide what you want to do with regard to medical marijuana dispensaries, how are you going to handle them? You can continue while you would initiate a new moratorium, which other counties are doing because there's the complexity of two different state organizations regulating marijuana. Medical marijuana will be regulated by the Oregon Health Authority and recreational marijuana will be regulated by O L C C which does not have any rules in place yet. The deadline for them or the time to go with them to do that would be January first or January fourth. So everything is still in state of flux and as a result, Columbia County has already passed an ordinance continuing its moratorium while it studies land use and zoning issues. And Deschutes County is considering doing a similar ordinance that would impose a moratorium while the county considered these complexities and decided how.
So in Platte County last week, just approved it.
Okay, I didn't realize that. So as far as addressing this, it's my recommendation that you do impose an additional moratorium. The moratorium for Columbia County, for example, will run until August twenty-seventh of this year and then there will be a possibility of extending that moratorium provided there's a public hearing on the question of extending it. So that seems to be a very flexible way of approaching this and that's my recommendation, follow the same law. Unless you'd rather use a procedure.
Yeah, we're going to follow you, you're the marijuana expert.
Hardly that.
So if we were to continue the moratorium, we would.
Well, you can't continue, it's over.
Yeah.
Well, if we extended or made a moratorium, we would need to, in my opinion, if the other counties are looking at land use and all this other thing, then we need to be, why are we extending or putting this moratorium on?
Right.
Then we need to have a process of doing.
Yeah, right now, we don't have, we have no studies that I know of that indicate how we should approach it in terms of land use or zoning for medical marijuana dispensaries. And then later we're going to be considering what we do with regard to. Yeah, the production, sale of recreational. So a lot of ordinances, you know, for recreational in particular, they create thousand-foot vans around schools and other places where you can't be selling or dispensing. So I think we, you know, obviously as a matter of public concern, we should be playing for, as far as I know right now. We just haven't completed studying yet, so I think the responsible thing to do would be for us to pass another ordinance, initiate a moratorium that would extend, you know, two, three months. And that would be a possibility of extending after that if we need to.
So we need to put that new ordinance together before we take any action today?
Well, you could, you would direct me to draft the ordinance and then that'd be the next thing.
I would like to do that.
And purpose of the moratorium would, would be for us to determine any restrictions. How you're going to regulate it? How you determine it?
Yep.
And who's going to initiate, in charge of that?
Well, if we give direction, put the ordinance together, then we need to have a finding person on our land use check into it. Basically, we'd follow what other counties are doing, looking at what they're doing on land use, you know, the school distance, the church distance or whatever is considered. It seems to be those are just things come from what I've heard secondhand, not necessarily absolute.
I could get you a draft ordinance by the end of this week and then if you're going to, or you're going to have a work session next week. How would be, now the O L C C will come up with some restrictions, schools. Right. Other things.
I don't think it's completely reinstated in the bill where other counties are doing it, there would be pretty good guidelines of what they've already been working on.
Do you have any feelings that what O L C C comes up with would be somewhere to?
Is that on recreational?
Depends on recreational. That's recreational.
Yeah, I'm betting.
Yeah, that we would adopt a medical dispensary to be concord with the O L C C limitations. It would, to some degrees, there's going to be applications for licensing and sale for recreational. But the trouble is that I don't know how well the two organizations do governmental bodies are going to work together. They don't talk to each other. One's going to think that's got the better idea than the other, that's going to happen, so.
And as of yesterday, the O L C C made their official fifteen-member committee appointments statewide. And they did not include an eastern ordering component to that committee.
Well, that's probably covered by the fact that several members of the committee already had marijuana charges that they had to.
Well, well, the thing of it is, is it's public knowledge, there's already development that wants to come to Lake County on the recreational side. And so, you know, that's even before O L C C set out the rules and the guidelines and licensing and all this stuff. Throughout the state, there are developers that are jockeying trying to secure places.
There's no reason why you can't proceed with your own regulation and then if later it's superseded by state law or state rules, then so be it, but you can write your own ordinance, regulate it, wait and see.
Are you saying that we kind of all inclusive, or are you talking about our legal counsel?
I serve at the direction of the board.
Within the parameters of your charge.
So for the direction today, I believe it's consensus of the board on medical marijuana for you to draft the ordinance together.
A moratorium ordinance for, for, for the, where it could automatically be extended. Yes, well, without automatically extended, that it would be extended. Yes, well, without automatically extended, it would be extended following a public hearing.
Okay. And that would be taken up at our next regular board meeting, May twentieth?
And that moratorium basically says no medical dispensary.
Right.
And the boundaries of Lake County.
That's correct. We can't do it for a long period of time, a long set period of time, we can extend it with reasons. That's why I want to have the extension on there, but we can't just say, okay, we're going to put a moratorium five years on that without...
All right, so you have that direction, sir? Ann is here, let's go back to the, what we can discuss in open session on the loan with... Camper.
Our, our, our... Ann, I gave the basic background on that, so I think they just have some specific questions on where we are at the moment.
Okay.
Last, last contact we had and last payment payment.
Last payment was made, that came in on August twelfth, two thousand fourteen, caught him up through the month of July, two thousand fourteen. We last verbal communication with them, I think, was earlier this year, when they said they were trying to get some kind of funding, loans through other means to pay this off, and we still haven't heard from them. So we've called, we've sent letters, we were looking for that next step of help on trying to collect on this, so we're hoping legal counsel could draft a letter, a demand notice of some sort, to try and spur them into payment, or at least talking to us about another plan. I mean, they haven't even talked to us about some kind of payment plan, so...
So legal counsel, is this where you said we may need to carry this into executive session, or can we talk about a letter?
No, if you want, if you can talk about a letter, and if that's what you'd like to do, then we stay in open session. If that's not your inclination, then if we're going to talk about litigation, then we go into that.
Well, I think that the letter from legal counsel is very appropriate, with putting this in on the letter of what his collateral and what our options are if you don't come in and work with us to come into concurrence or at least a payment plan, that we are, we are ready to secure our collateral as far as we need to.
I think we need to have that stated in there, that this is prior to the May twentieth meeting, so that we may be going into the executive session or may not, but we will have heard from them or not.
It's pretty simple, pretty simple what the collateral is.
Well, there is no collateral.
Yeah, they machine itself.
Oh, we did. Okay.
I think one letter, that if they don't respond, then we proceed with considering collateral.
So first step is for you to draft a letter with what our guideline there and what we can do, that we would accept and come in and work with Ann for a payment plan.
And a year or two of payment plan.
Are they actually operating, do you know if they're operating?
I just know they're still in town. I don't know, I don't know what their operations are.
Okay.
So that one's taken care of, we don't need any more discussion on that, you're able to put that together.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So other than that, we have executive session to go in.
One item potential litigation and executive session.
Okay, so we're actually going to take a five-minute break and come back at eleven o'clock.
Can we make it a seven minute?
We can make it a seven. We will take a break, and when we come back in this session, we will go into executive...